I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Chani?
Yes.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Proton Power?
Here.
And Mayor Pogankord?
Here.
Councilmember Smith is absent tonight, thank you.
Okay, well, could you please stand for our invocation from, uh, Luke Smith from the, uh, Pusum Life Assembly?
God, we thank you for today. We thank you, Lord, that we can trust you with each and every moment of our lives. God, we pray over the, the city of Tehachapi. God, we pray that you would, um, prosper this community. God, we pray that your blessings and your favor would rest upon it. We pray, Lord, over safety. We pray for protection. God, we pray, um, that you would just lead us and guide us. Give all those, Lord, in this room, wisdom, Lord, as, as they make, uh, decisions tonight. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have community engagement. Maya has lots of things to say.
Yes, good evening, council. As you said, Joanie, or Mayor, excuse me, we have several exciting things to talk about today. Uh, the first of which, coming out of our Tehachapi Police Department. So, to give you a little bit of background, the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, also known as POST, is a program that provides lots of great benefits for our peace officers, which our police department utilizes. They provide leadership training programs and professional certifications that recognize our police officers' achievements and proficiencies. So, one of those achievements is the POST Executive Certificate. This honor signifies a high level of commitment to leadership within the law enforcement field. And from what I understand, it is, it is also the highest level of achievement or certificate that one can receive from POST. So, today, tonight, we are honoring our Police Chief, Richard Sandridge, who has received that Executive Certificate. So at this time, I would like Police Chief Sanders to come and give us some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Maya, thank you. You know, when I, I'm starting year twenty-eight and, uh, I, I was thinking about this certificate and I thought, ah, it's not really a big deal. And I was actually gonna be like, no, let's don't even, you know, present it here. But then I start thinking about times in my career when I've seen people like this get achievements. And then it was always something, a goal that I would look at and say, I would like to be there one day. And I think it's really important to come up here and receive that, uh, certificate. One, because it's a culmination of a career's worth of work. The worst part is, it starts showing that I'm nearing the end, um, of, of when it's gonna be time for me to retire. Because this is the, this is, this certificate is the pinnacle of what I can receive from POST and it means that I've achieved everything I've set out to achieve. But I'm not done yet, but it just kinda lets you know that, you know, the light is starting to flicker at the end of the tunnel. And so, um, I really appreciate it. Thank you for the time, words, Maya, and explaining the certificate, because if I had to do it, I wouldn't do it right. And that's it.
Congratulations.
You know, I'm not usually in these photos, but I don't wanna be.
Can we get you guys some more, uh, in front of the flag here?
Oh, okay.
Your camera in the middle.
All right. Start here, please. Three, two, one. All right, and here. And to Pat.
I'd just like to say, Chief is, uh, an amazing individual personally and professionally. He has served us well and will continue to serve us well. He has a contract. He's, uh, he's not retiring until I retire.
That was, that was the deal.
He leads an amazing department. We're so proud of being the safest city in Kern County. It matters. We're protecting everyone's investments, their friends, their family. So, thank you, Chief. Leading a great, a great department. Thank you.
If, if I can, Greg, while they're here, if you don't mind, you and I have had some conversations lately about your interactions with the public and how much, um, positive feedback you're getting about the Police Department. And I meant to send them out an email today after that, but since everyone's here, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of not my, just me, the City Council, City Manager. I'm sure he'll echo the words of the positive feedback we're getting from the public, from the leadership you're showing, the outstanding job you're doing. And I will tell you, I sleep at night knowing the team that is out there working every day. And I just say thank you. And I mean it.
So, everything everybody said, when I came here fifty-three years ago, there was only two police officers and two sheriffs. And this, your leadership has brought over, what, ten, fifteen people into the department? It's amazing. I'm just saying the officers.
Yeah.
You know, and they'd have to shh, 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 do a little dance to try to get everything covered.
Yeah.
And it's so good to see this.
We take public safety seriously.
How proud I am.
I'm glad you are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me be in the photo.
Thank you, sir.
Stan, yeah, she goes again. She's full of surprises tonight.
Oh, yes.
There you go.
We have another opportunity to recognize another great achievement out of the city of Tehachapi. This is for our Finance Department. They recently received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for, from the Government Finance Officers Association, also known as the GFOA, for the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So this award represents the Finance Department's commitment to clearly communicating the city's financial story and to motivate potential readers to read the report. Um, according to the GFOA, this certificate is the highest form of recognition in a governmental accounting and financial reporting. And entertainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Uh, this, this achievement was so significant, in fact, Senator Shannon Grove even sent her congratulations via a letter, um, last week, I believe. So, this is a really big deal. And at this time, I'd like to invite Hamed Jones, our Finance Director, to make a few comments.
Thank you, Maya. Mayor Pogankord, council members. As Maya said, uh, this certificate of achievement is, uh, for excellence in financial reporting from GFOA is one of the highest forms of recognition, uh, that a government can receive. Uh, and what it really shows is that the city has embraced transparency and full disclosure. Um, and we go beyond the minimum requirements of the generally accepted accounting principles. Um, and so, uh, this is the seventh year in a row that the city has received this award. Uh, we'd like to thank our Finance Department for all the hard work that they put into preparing this report. And I'm happy to receive this on behalf of the city.
Hamed must be getting tired of coming up. Okay, it says, "Congratulations on receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And we commend you on this, uh, commend you on this great accomplishment. We thank the Finance Department for your dedication to fiscal responsibility and transparency."
All right, start here real quick. Okay, over to the middle. And to Pat.
Thank you. And, um, just, may I note that we've received this award too when, um, our little friend down here, Hannah, was also in finance. Our Finance Department is like top A number one plus because of these people. Thank you.
All right, last thing for me tonight. Um, I don't know if you guys were aware, but it is National Farmers Market Week this week. So August third through the ninth is recognized nationally to celebrate our markets all across the country and to just take a moment to, uh, appreciate the, the role that they play in providing healthy food for people all around the country. Uh, so the goal of this recognition is to boost, uh, market attendance and visibility all throughout the country. So as I said, these farmers, farmers markets are essential to our local food systems and they also provide opportunities for our residents to connect with small businesses and one another. Um, I believe, I've seen most of you guys out there and you've seen how people interact with each other through the whole market. It's a great space for camaraderie and, you know, seeing your old neighbors and friends and family. It's a really great environment for all. Um, and I think our Community Engagement Department can say that we are proud that the market serves as somewhat of a catalyst for a lot of other great things going on downtown. Uh, I think that the market helps introduce people to some of the local downtown businesses that maybe they haven't seen of or heard of before. And again, it's a great space for families, individuals of all ages to come together in a free and safe environment. Uh, so at this time, I want to introduce our Market Manager, Jessica Garner, to add a little bit on this, uh, recognition.
Thank you, Maya, Mayor, council members. Um, so the farmer's market is, I might be the manager, but, um, it's a huge team effort. We collaborate through all of the departments in the city. Um, PD is out there every night, um, helping make it safe, making their presence known. Our Public Works Department, um, they start setting up at one o'clock. They help us tear down. Uh, they really do an amazing job helping us out. Um, I have a whole community engagement team and our front office staff. They also come help and, um, manage the booth, help sell T-shirts and hats. So it is fully a team effort from a lot of different people in the city. Um, also, we have some amazing vendors. We could not do it without them. So, um, thank you, everyone.
Okay, let's put it bright so I don't get on the wrong line this time.
Okay. Okay. That one, if you don't want it, it's also way around.
Oh, good.
Yeah. All right, ready? Three, two, one. All right, to the middle. And to Pat.
There you go.
I mean, it's supposed to look like we're giving it to you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for everything.
Okay, our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contradversal by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council concerning the items before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Do I have any? Objections?
Anyone from the, uh, the audience that'd like to remove anything?
Anyone in the audience first? And then council?
No.
I'll second.
Councilmember Chani?
Yes.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Power?
Yes.
Mayor Pogankord?
Yes.
Or zero vote, motion carried.
Hey, public comment? Audience?
We have Claire Scotty that would like to come and speak.
Hello. This is the chamber. Claire Scotty here at the chamber. Um, Mayor Pogankord, city council members, I just wanted to come up and take two minutes to say thank you so much for this amazing partnership with the city and the chamber to make Mountain Festival happen. Uh, we have amazing partners, um, Tehachapi Valley Recreation Parks District. And without this community, without us all collaborating, an event like this doesn't happen. And it's sixty-two years old this year. It's, it's an outstanding event and we're so excited to bring it back. I know so many people are doing their school reunions, their family reunions coming up. Like Kelsey's is completely booked out because they are overflowing with reunions. Um, a lot of our hotels have called in and said, you know, yeah, we're booking up like we do every year. People are coming back out. So, thank you so much. You know, this, this is a tradition in our town and, um, we're very excited. We have, you know, AV Arts and Crafts vendors, we have local nonprofits, local businesses, um, lots of great food. We have several bands like Bear Mountain Boys coming back out. We also have Angels Roost, um, who will be headlining, uh, Flashback and Zephyr Saints and Forty-Two Out, so amazing music. And we also have a Dunk Tank, which is kinda like bringing back the nostalgia this year. So if anyone would be interested in being dumped, you can come and see me, please. And then, um, Family Life Pregnancy Center is going to have a private cozy space for infant feeding and changing. So something very comfortable for our families, so they feel right at home. And, uh, BMO is gonna have an ATM. So, um, just trying to make it very inclusive and to also help bring all of our community all throughout Tehachapi and like downtown for Green Street Get Down. We're so excited to, to see that with the city and, um, starting out the morning with the five K. So, it's so great to see everybody working together on this event. And I just wanted to really thank you from the bottom of my heart for, for working with us and helping us out. Thank you so much. Any questions, Mary?
Thank you.
We're so confident in Claire at the chamber. It's on consent, so it's already approved.
There you go. Okay, City Clerk reports.
Oh, we have another public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Corey. Before I move on here, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we didn't put in a card beforehand. Corey and Sadie with TVRPD, we just wanted to extend another thank you to the city for your partnership and collaboration for Parks and Recreation Month. We celebrated a full month of activities and, uh, a number of events. And so I just wanted to say thank you. We also have Golden Hills in the crowd and the chamber. Just wanted to say thank you for that partnership on Parks and Rec Month as well. And Sadie has a couple more thank yous.
Thank you, thank you. Um, first off, I want to say thank you for, um, letting us host Mountain Gallup again through the city of Tehachapi limits. It's super fun and it's really nice to keep the, um, community up with fitness. So we have Parks and Rec Month, everyone's out moving around, having fun. And now we are ending summer essentially with Mountain Gallup and just having fun, running around all of Tehachapi. And I also want to say thank you to, um, partnering with us and your huge sponsorship with Old Timers. We had about five hundred Old Timers visit yesterday. Ms. Pogankord was there yesterday. And our emcee, Corey Cosello, did a fabulous job yesterday. Um, super fun event. Everyone just had so much fun mingling and just getting back with everyone that they graduated with or haven't seen in years. So those five hundred people had the best time yesterday and the weather was perfect. So thank you so much for sponsoring our event and just believing in the Old Timers reunion. I've heard no one really does it in any other community. So it's nice to have something rare here in Tehachapi. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys have had an extremely busy summer, keeping us all busy and making our community even more beautiful than it is. Thank you. Anybody else? No one? Okay, then we have City Clerk reports.
Next, we have number eleven on community engagement.
Okay, you don't have any. Okay.
You guys get to just hear from us all night.
I know, isn't that great?
All right, I'm here to ask the City Council, um, well, I'll put some background here first. Um, we, you guys adopted an ordinance, um, establishing a downtown entertainment zone. Um, it authorizes the city to establish, um, an area where people can consume alcoholic beverages on the public streets. Um, we gave you this map back in April and you said, yeah, let's do this. We need to update it a little bit to show a few new dates. We want to add a Tehachapi Pizza Festival. Um, initial date will be September twenty-seventh with a backup date as October eighteenth. And then we do also need to add the Tehachapi Apple Festival, which will be happening October eleventh. Um, and then the Thunder on the Mountain Car Show, the date changed slightly. So we're moving that from the se- twenty-seventh of September to the twentieth of September. So we're just recommending that the City Council approve a resolution amending the ordinance, um, twenty-five to seven eighty and the Tehachapi Municipal Code, section twelve point ten point thirty.
Any questions? Public? Council?
Don't make their motion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Chani?
Yes.
Councilmember Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Power?
Yes.
Mayor Pogankord?
Yes.
Or zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. And I was very proud to be able to tell somebody we were still having the Apple Fest because they go, oh, darn, it's clean. But no Apple Fest, I go, oh, yes. One day. Okay, Andrew. City Managers report.
Got a big promotion. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Got my train back.
Big shoes to fill.
We need to get some bigger reports, thank you.
Evening, Mayor Pogankord, council members. Uh, first item I have for you tonight is the Notice of Completion for the Tehachapi Event Center Fencing Project. It was eight hundred feet, just under eight hundred feet of fencing in front of the rodeo ground placed by Yukon Fence. Uh, it was delivered on time and on budget and, yeah, and around the fourth of July and the various events. So, uh, hats off to Yukon Fence and their team for, for producing the work. This is a notice of completion, so it's informational only, but I will answer questions if you guys have any.
I went by there this afternoon, looks very well.
Thanks.
Is there anything we can do about all the, can we use any more, do we have any more asphalt chipping laying around that we can use in that area?
We have a plan for landscaping.
Oh, okay.
And so as chipping, chips come along, we use them for alleys first, but we, we definitely have a plan in the bedroom.
Okay.
It's coming now.
That's the only thing, just to keep the dust down and the ruts.
It looks really wonderful. I have family in this week and they're on the other side of the, uh, the hotels. And we drove by there about three or four times a day and it just did look so beautiful, so nice.
Did clean up nicely.
Yes, big change.
The next item I have is the, I forget. Uh, Notice of Completion for the Rehabilitation and Relocation of Tax UAA. Uh, speaking to Ashley on this, this project's ten years in the making, so we're glad to have it done. It's over seven million dollars in grant funding.
Only ten years because of the FAA.
Correct.
Not us.
Yes, sir. And five point eight billion in construction. Uh, special thanks to obviously Airport Manager Ashley Whitmore and Fertile Engineering, specifically John Smith. They managed the, the design and construction of this. Uh, my team was fortunate enough to help with manage construction, but it was truly, uh, Ashley and John that, that delivered this tip to tail over the last decade and, and we're constantly finishing. Happy to answer any questions on that one as well.
Andrew's not giving himself near enough credit on this. He played a huge role and a huge thank you for me on that, um, because he's the engineer. Uh, but as he said, this has been a long time coming. We first had this on our capital improvement, improvement project list back in two thousand nine, I believe it was. So FAA had approved it in twenty fourteen. So we started the EAR process and just kinda sat on their desk for a while. But, uh, with some pushing on the city side and stuff, we finally got it going and got construction. And again, big thank you to Andrew on this.
Thank you.
I'm so happy, finally, it's been completed. I remember that I've been prepping this in a, in a five-year budget every year. Okay, we're keep putting it, I ask Ashley, is that good? And you know, ever gonna be done? She said, oh, yeah, yeah, it will. So I am so happy to see this project being completed. And like I said, it's not the staff, like Greg said, it's FAA.
Thank you.
City Managers report?
Thank you, Mayor Pogankord. Today, we've had a very positive meeting, that's for sure. But these meetings don't happen by accident. We have great people. We have great planning. We have great budgets. We have great community support, Golden Hill CSD, TVRPD, the Chamber, and many others that are not here. So, like, we could not do what we do without partnerships and without long-term planning when it comes to public safety, public infrastructure, communications, planning, engineering, all the departments across the, across the board. I wanted to say congratulations to several of our partners. This last weekend was a very busy weekend. It was, um, it was lots, lots of things going on. Golden Hill CSD had the community partners event in their parking lot. It was, um, it was well-attended, lots of different agencies were there and promoting the different opportunities. Uh, out at the airport, we had the EAA, Experimental Aircraft Association, along with local pilots, giving rides to Tehachapi youth. How many did they, sixty-seven?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five children were given rides in airplanes, some of them probably the first time in an airplane, general aviation airplane. And so they were, you know, exposed to aviation. That's a good thing, right?
Good people all the way from Las Vegas, I believe.
Did they? Very well organized, very safe. You know, I went out there and Jessica was margin in charge and part of a, a nice team of people that were, that were facilitating that. The Heritage League had a vintage yard sale fundraising for the, uh, for the Heritage League Museum, Tehachapi Museum, and then the Array House across the street. So congratulations to them. The city, uh, hosted the Railroad Park Concert. I saw several of you there. We had a great band. It was just a great evening. We had the lights on in the trees and it was just a really, a nice thing. And then, as you pointed out, the old time, uh, Old Timers picnic, uh, at Central Park. As you're aware, the city donates five thousand dollars towards the purchase of the food and we're happy to do that. Um, and then, um, Mountain Festival coming, coming up here soon. Uh, it's gonna be action-packed, that's for sure. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, rodeo Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday. And then the five K, Central Park, Railroad Park has events going on, Green Street Get Down. And I'm sure I'm missing about fifteen things, but there's gonna be lots to do on, on that weekend. And then Jessica, I'm not sure if you mentioned it, but only two farmer's markets remain. I think you did mention it.
I didn't.
This, okay, this Thursday and the next. It's been such a spectacular, um, you know, event. Not only can you buy fresh fruits and vegetables, but you, it's a social event. And I see people there and Public Works just does an amazing job keeping it tidy and safe, clean, and Police Department, you know, with the oversight. And it's just, it's a great event. So just really happy, uh, with all the progress we're making, the, the positive progress with our partners. But we couldn't do it without appropriate finances. We couldn't do it without appropriate planning, Public Works, Police Department, Communications, on, on, uh... So we're just really hitting on all cylinders. So it makes me very proud and I know it does to end the community. I hear a lot of, uh, a lot of positive comments. But I want to know about the negative too. If you have something, it's not all peaches and cream, right?
No.
If you have something going on, I want to know about it. But we're very proud of the new asphalt that's been put in this summer. We have a lot more coming, uh, working with Mr. Marsh. We're probably gonna bring to you here in the next month or two kind of an overview of all of the different projects that the city has completed in the last couple of years, just to give you a flavor, because you tend to forget, right? Everyone forgets, we paved this, we paved that, and that, orange sidewalk, curb gutter, those sorts of things. And so just a reminder to all of us, uh, the tax dollars collected locally are being spent locally on infrastructure maintenance and on public safety and other things. on infrastructure maintenance and on public safety and other things. But it's very appropriately done, approved by the council and approved by the community. And we're just happy to be able to facilitate all of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just waiting for my street to hang up.
It's on the list.
Yeah.
They're all on the list.
It's been there for a while. Okay, council member reports. Hannah?
Yeah. You know, I had a guest, so we went out for dinner one evening and I saw the alleyway was so nice, well-paved, and I so proudly bragged that this is the city's dollar, I mean, tax money in, you know, at work. And they were all saying, oh wow, you know, usually alleyways are very crumble there. They're not good, but I was very proud of our Public Works Department, you know, made it work. And so, and another day is, you know, thank you Police Department for making our town very safe. And I can always tell other people that, you know, we live in one of the safest towns in California, if not all, you know, United States. And I am very grateful for all the department and the city that they are doing a superb job and I am so proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Nothing really, Mayor, just really proud of everything that's been done with our public works and our roads, our alleys. The city is beautiful, it's clean, so very, very good. Everybody does a great job. Thank you.
Takes a village.
Everyone's used the words. No. You know, when we have these events like the farmer's market, like the mountain festival, these big events are time-consuming bandits and it takes a lot. But it's the day-to-day stuff that you guys do, and it's everyone in this room, finance, public works, engineering, I see someone from the planning commission, marketing, the Police Department, everybody in this room contributes. And I think the greatest success is the culture of collaboration. You guys all work together, everyone has their hands in it, and the person whose wheelhouse is that specialty is referred to. And that's one of the reasons. And it starts from the top down. And that's, that's a very difficult thing to have, is a culture of collaboration. And I think that's been the common denominator in successes here. So thank all of you, but, and these events are wonderful, but it's the day-to-day. The people want their water on. They want to know that everything's safe. The roads are, by the way, Dennison's gorgeous. It's like butter, but, but, oh, it's so nice. But that's what people count on day-to-day. And, and those daily things aren't as recognized as the events. But thank you for this culture of collaboration and everything all of you do. Yeah.
Yes, the old saying, it takes a village. It definitely does. Our city would not be as beautiful and wonderful as it is without everybody pitching in to lend a hand to make it the way it is. And if you are blind or if you're in a bad car and you don't feel the difference in the roads when you go, Cherry Lane in particular, and when I go by Dennison, I just go, oh, good, they got it done before school. And it looks beautiful, very smooth, and you'll enjoy the ride. And I do want these paved streets. So everybody else, I think, has hit all the important things that have happened this month or the last couple of weeks. It's been a month since our last meeting. So, and thank you again for everybody who helps make our city beautiful. With that, I think we are adjourned.
Close session.
We are adjourned to a closed session.